Hi, everybody. We're here for the meeting for August. Please stand so we could... For the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. Stick the flag of the United States of America. It's a pillar of republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Because we don't have a quorum, I cannot... We can't do a vote for the minutes. So basically, just gonna go right to the presentation, which would be the young lady right here.
That's right.
Doesn't have anything about it.
Right, right, right. Okay.
Yep. That's it.
Is this screen gonna work?
Now, for everybody asking, this is the Natural Resources Inventory Presentation, a document be posted on the Town of Kent's website. It may be viewed by clicking on the link on the website itself.
Oh, is that a password to use that screen? You hear? I did. It's asking for a password. Oh, that's... Okay, that would be the password on your computer. I don't know the password on your computer.
It's not mine. This is...
Oh, it's not yours?
It belongs here. Yeah. This is the town hall's.
She needs the password for the town hall computer.
I'll take two to start.
We don't... It's not our computer. Do we know the password for the town hall computer?
That, we have no access to. I don't have any access to the computer.
Okay, here it is. One second. Let's try that again. Does she have a trap from Cougar's way?
I don't think so.
Presentation, presentation.
Yeah.
Ah, yes. Windows. Slowest computers in the world.
Right.
I hate Windows. Funny, every office I've worked in, I've insisted on Apple computers. So why else? Because Windows is so slow.
I hope so.
I just got a new one and it's super fast now. It's, um, you know, Windows.
Yeah?
But it's like, booting up is like nothing now, so...
Yeah. That's good.
There we go. Yeah.
Well, they don't have, uh... What's the name of that character they had?
Cloppy?
To help you out.
All right.
Let's see. There you go.
Okay. That's what it's meant to look like.
True.
Yes, so is this working?
Yes, yes. Feel free to address the audience as well.
Okay. My name's Gretchen Stevens. I'm a biologist with Hudsonia, which is a environmental research institute. We're based in Duchess County. We work all over the Hudson Valley and other parts of the Northeast. We study the plants and animals and habitats of the region and their ecology, their conservation. We've been working with a... The Town of Kent NRI Steering Committee for the last ch-ch-year-plus, since the spring of 2022, on a natural resources inventory for Kent. This is a project that is funded by the New York State Environmental Protection Fund, a grant to the Town of Kent through the Dutch and... the Hudson River Estuary Program. We've been working very closely with the Steering Committee on this project. And I'm gonna tell you just a little about the NRI, as we call it. The document is on the website of the Town of Kent Conservation Advisory Committee. It's there now for everyone to review. We do hope the Planning Board in particular will be reviewing it. And thinking about it as a document for your use. It was... We really had town agencies in mind when we were putting this together, as well as certainly landowners, in fact, and conservation organizations, and anyone who's interested in learning about the Kent landscape. Let's see how these things work. The Steering Committee is made up of members of the Conservation Advisory Committee, the Planning Board, the Town Board, the town's environmental consultant, the town historian, and several other town residents who bring special expertise to the project. We're also assisted by Christine Vanderland, who's with the Hudson River Estuary Program. The NRI describes lots of the resources of Kent, the natural resources, but we pay particular attention to resources of conservation concern, including things like water and soils and plants and animals and habitats and scenic areas and recreation resources. We do intend that the... and certainly hope that the NRI will be used by town agencies and county agencies for comprehensive planning, for developing local policy, for... Also by conservation NGOs such as land trusts, who are... who can learn about areas that may be most important for protection. Certainly by landowners, who we hope can learn more about their land and how it fits into the larger landscape. By developers who may be thinking about new projects on the ground. This can help them design those projects in ways that will maybe protect some of the most sensitive areas on a site. And of course, the general public, really, really, anyone. We hope everyone will be using this. At the core of the document is a series of 29 maps showing various aspects of the town landscape. This is elevation zones, bedrock geology, watersheds, aquifers, water bodies, steep slopes, wetlands. This shows the state-regulated wetlands, the wetlands on the National Wetland Inventory Map. It also shows the wetlands that are identified partly by the soil conditions in the Town of Kent Local Code, the wetlands that are defined in part by poorly-drained soils and alluvial soils, floodplain soils. You should... You probably do know, I hope you know, that there are lots of other wetlands in the landscape that don't show up on this map or any other public map. They really have to be... All the other wetlands need to be found on the ground. This is a map showing special biological areas in Kent. The big purple sort of half-circle in the western part is an area that's been identified by the New York Natural Heritage Program as especially important for... as a foraging area for rare bat species, especially the Indiana bat in this case, and I think the northern long-eared bat. This also shows so-called areas of known importance for rare species. The sort of brownish or yellowish areas are for rare species of terrestrial animals. There's a small... The small magenta area down in the southeast corner is an area of special importance for rare plants. The Yellow Stream along Peekskill, Hollow Creek, and a tributary has been identified as especially important area for the... Protecting the cold-water habitat of those streams. And the sort of blue-green areas along the west branch of the Croton River is especially identified as important for the American eel, a diadromus species, which is one that it develops to maturity here in tributaries of the Hudson River. And then it... Once it matures, it travels 1,000 miles out into the ocean to spawn. This is just a sampling of the rare species in Kent. Most places have never been surveyed for rare species. So the only way to find them, just like for all the other wetlands, is to find them on the ground. And that usually has to be done by people with special expertise in identifying and recognizing habitats for rare species and the species themselves. A really great addition to this natural resources inventory is the biodiversity studies that are being carried out by Beth Herr and Bill Buck, who are a retired naturalist and biologist. They've been conducting these surveys for years. They've been developing a huge list of the plants and animals and other organisms that they're finding all over the town. They're visiting every interesting place they can get to and documenting everything they can find. And this includes, you know, plants, insects, reptiles and amphibians, mammals, birds, even non-animals and non-plants like fungi and slime moles. So it's a terrific study. The... Their work... Their ongoing list, and it is a work in progress, will be posted on the Conservation Advisory Committee's website. And it will be continually added to for as long as Bill and Beth can keep doing it and pass it on to their successors. This is a map showing the Forest Condition Index. This was put together by... Modeling by the Natural Heritage Program based on measures of size and connectivity and forest habitat quality. This modeling found that most of the forests in Kent are in the 80th percentile. In fact, many are in the 90th percentile and higher compared to all the other forests in the Hudson Valley. Very high-quality forests here for... Especially for wildlife, but also for lots of the other services that forests provide to us. There are many other maps. I'm not gonna go into all of them. Flood zones, land cover, large forests, climate resilience, water uses, significant biodiversity areas, and so forth. The narrative of the NRI explains... The features that are shown in these maps explains their significance to the human community here in Kent, explains their ecological significance, and provides a lot of different kinds of recommendations for how to protect the important areas, how to use other areas in the most sustainable ways. Lots of other things are dealt with in the NRI, including threats to resources of concern, lots of conservation principles that can be applied anywhere related to natural resources, existing protections for natural resources. And there are some, certainly at the local level from Kent and at the state level and federal government. And ways that those protections can be extended by policies and legislation that can be adopted here in Kent if the town chooses to do so. One of the great things about the NRI is a terrific bunch of photos that have been contributed by Kent residents. These are really fabulous photos. The version of the NRI that's on the website now doesn't have photos or has just a handful of them. These will be in the final draft. And it's a wonderful illustration of the remarkable landscapes and biological diversity of the town. I could go on and on. It was hard to select the ones for this presentation, but they're really, really wonderful. There are explanations and descriptions in the NRI about basic conservation principles that can be applied anywhere in the town. You all are... Have probably heard of and understand, basically, the concept of habitat fragmentation, which is a theme we return to quite a few times in the NRI. Fragmentation is simply the splitting up of a large habitat area into smaller segments that are often unsuitable for the kinds of plants and wildlife that need large areas that provide them the protection they need from predators and habitat disturbance and so forth. One of the basic mechanisms of fragmentation is the problem of edge effects, which are the influence that... Of habitat edges on interior areas of habitats and on the plants and animals that occupy those interior areas. I just wanna give you a quick illustration of how edge effects work and how this might come up when you're reviewing new development projects. We're looking at a... An aerial photo of a forested area, mostly deciduous forest. The darker red areas are conifers. This is in... This is color infrared photography. That's why it looks like this is reds instead of greens. Running north to south through this is a road. And then off to the east is a driveway up to a house site. This is part of a proposed development of eight such houses, all on long driveways extending from this road into this forest. The... One study has found that a single house has effects on the surrounding forests, amounting to 30 acres of that forest, where it is likely to be affecting the success of songbirds. It's likely to be spreading invasive species into the forest and having lots of other effects from noise and lights and roaming pets and, in some cases, pollution. But 30 acres... So it's not simply the footprint of the house and the yard, but a much larger area of the forest that can be affected by even a single house. Similarly, along roads. Many studies have shown that the impacts of roads can extend 300 feet and more from a road or a driveway, affecting many aspects of the way wildlife and plants are using that forest. So in this case, although the actual footprint of that road and that driveway in that house and yard might be only several acres at most, the actual impacts might be as much as 200 acres or more. It's just something to think about, you know, once the other seven houses in this proposed development... This is not in Kent, by the way, are in place. The footprint is... The actual footprint is a small part of the impacts on that forest. And this is the... One of the ways that... The fragmenting features like roads and yards can affect large areas of forest. There are lots of general recommendations in the NRI. Things like maintaining forests wherever possible, and that's because of their great values for maintaining and protecting our water resources, our groundwater, our surface water, for lots of other services like moderating local air temperatures, certainly wildlife habitats, and carbon storage, both in the above-ground vegetation, the below-ground vegetation, and the soils. Maintaining and restoring forests along streams. Forests are really the caretakers of streams. They provide shade and organic matter that feeds the stream food web and habitat for animals that need to move between both kinds of habitats. Minimizing applications of polluting substances, which is, of course, obvious... Something... Obviously, something we should do, but I think lots of people don't understand that, you know, the de-icing salts they use on their driveways probably end up largely in streams and in soils where they don't dissipate. Fertilizers and pesticides used on lawns and gardens can be very harmful to streams and ponds and lakes. Maintaining broad buffer zones around sensitive areas, not just streams and ponds, but other areas that might be sensitive to disturbance. Protecting habitat areas in large, broad configurations instead of small and narrow areas will have the greatest... The most effective impact on protecting biodiversity. Maintaining broad habitat connectivity between one site and another, habitat connectivity across the landscape. Maintaining intact hilltops and hillsides. Those are areas... They certainly have special ecological importance, but they are also... May have the greatest scenic impacts on the scenic landscape. They often have larger view sheds in areas... In lowland areas and flatter areas. Minimizing outdoor lighting. Outdoor lighting can be very harmful to insects, which are in worldwide decline, to many kinds of wildlife that depend on darkness for many aspects of their lives, for foraging, for shelter. And lights actually trigger certain metabolic processes in insects and in some other organisms. And lights can be very, very disruptive. There are lots of these general measures for water resources, for biological resources, farmland, scenic resources, recreation areas. The NRI, excuse me, also has some very specific recommendations for initiatives that the town could take. And these are all explained and described in the NRI. Things like conducting a groundwater study and developing a groundwater protection plan. All of the drinking water in Kent derives from groundwater. And we're in better shape here, certainly in the Northeast than other parts of the country. But even here, we are expected to have much more prolonged droughts than we've had in the past, and our water could be in trouble even here. Conduct a town-wide survey of scenic locations. This is so that the most important scenic areas to the town can be identified and mapped and so that those areas can be considered when new land uses are being proposed, so that the new uses can be designed in ways that help to protect the areas that the town deems most important. Update the comprehensive plan to improve mitigation and response to climate change. Enough time has passed since the comprehensive plan was first published, and we know a lot more now about climate change, what to expect, and how do... We might be able to manage the land in ways that will respond most effectively. There are some recommendations for revisions to the town code, like protecting wetlands smaller than one acre, prohibiting new construction in flood zones, adopting dark skies legislation that relates to light pollution, and allowing development of pollinator yards, which are, as I understand it now, prohibited in the town code. Those are just a few. There are lots of other such recommendations that have come out of the NRI. We expect and hope that the NRI will be used for identifying local conservation priorities. There's a lot of information there that can contribute to that process. For updating the comprehensive plan and revising the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, to inform the normal secret reviews that the Planning Board undertakes for development projects, for possibly designating critical environmental areas if the town wants to go ahead with something like that, and possibly developing a community preservation plan that would help the town actually purchase either land or conservation easements on places that the town might feel are especially important. There are also many uses for landowners and developers. But I wanted to especially talk about one of the ways that I think that the NRI might be especially useful to the Planning Board in environmental reviews of development projects. I'm on the Conservation Advisory Council in my hometown in Hillsdale in Columbia County. And there, we regularly assist the Planning Board with reviews of projects. And I use the NRI... The Hillsdale NRI on a daily basis. And this is one of the ways that I use it. Certainly, looking at the... All the general measures for conservation that are outlined in the NRI. But also, looking at the series of maps and the explanations that go along with the maps can help you understand a lot about any particular site of interest. So I'm just gonna walk through the way I would use the Kent NRI if I were here on the Conservation Advisory Committee or on the Planning Board. Taking this site outlined in red there. This is a pretend site. If any of you live there or near there, don't worry. Nothing's happening there. This is a made-up site. In fact, this is made up of several different... Several actual parcels. But let's say this is a 100-acre site, roughly, where a... The landowner is proposing a, say, a 15-lot subdivision, designed in an ordinary way. What I would do is then look at some of the maps that might give us a lot of good information. Looking at the elevation zone map, it looks like the lightest area there is at some of the higher elevations in the town, elevations of 800 up to 1,000 feet. The issues around land use there are several. You sometimes get interesting habitats at high elevations that you don't get in other areas. But also, those areas may have the greatest impact on the scenic landscapes. So one thing to think about when you're designing a new project. This map shows the steep slopes of the town. As you know, the town ordinance requires that any... That significant disturbance of land on slopes of 15% or greater needs a permit from the town. This map shows the... These areas with 15% slopes. It also shows a higher threshold of 25% slopes, the very steep areas. So on our hypothetic... So on our hypothetical subdivision site, it looks like we have some very steep slopes at the, up on that high hill, and some pretty steep slopes on other parts of the site. This is the hydrologic soil groups, which are, this, this map indicates the infiltration rate of the soils, which the town code uses to, to adjust the densities of residential lots. The infiltration rate, of course, affects how septic systems are going to operate in a place like that. And this shows that a good part of the site, more than half the site is, has infiltration rates that are very slow. That would be very poor for septic siting without special engineering. And the lower elevation areas have moderate infiltration rates. This map shows wetlands. And there are some wetlands on the map, shown in here in green and dark, dark purple, mostly along a stream that runs south through this down into Sagamore Lake. Of course, there might be other wetlands on the site, and I would hope the applicant would find those, or the planning board would require that the, that the site be surveyed for additional wetlands. This shows that the, the site is in one of these large forest areas. This is in a forest area of 1,230 acres of substantially unfragmented forest. And this shows that it's in an area in the 80th and higher percentile in terms of measures of forest quality and connectivity and, and carbon storage for, of, compared to other forests in the Hudson Valley. So a high-quality forest here and a large forest. This shows areas of potential, sorry, bedrock outcrops. This is just areas where the soils are very shallow or the bedrock is actually exposed. This would affect many aspects of how the land is developed and how erodible the soils are. This also might mean, if the bedrock is right there, that the, there'd have to be a lot of blasting and hammering to, to get driveways and foundations in place. This shows that the, our hypothetical site is in an area where there's been, it's an area of the rare bat foraging area. And also, it's an area that's been identified as for other rare animals. From this map and from the NRI, we, we can't actually tell what species that is. The reason is that the heritage, the Natural Heritage Program and the DEC are very careful about divulging the locations of rare species because they are very vulnerable to illegal collecting, sometimes harassment or collecting for illegal markets. Reptiles and amphibians are especially vulnerable to that, as are rare, certain rare plants. So, but you know that there, there could be rare animals on this site, and the thing to do would be to make sure the applicant makes an inquiry to the Natural Heritage Program, so you and they can, and the applicant can know whether the, whether, you know, what the habitat needs of the animals are and how the subdivision could be best designed to accommodate those needs. This map shows the wildlife connectivity priority areas. This is part of a study done by the Hudson Highlands Land Trust, where they, they looked at, I think it was nine different species of conservation concern, including insects and reptiles and amphibians and birds and mammals, all of which use the landscape in different ways, they need to move in different ways. They identify, the Heritage Program identified the parts of the landscape that may be most important for the continued persistence of the populations of those species, thinking about how those species need to use the landscape and move. And in these days of rapidly changing climate, lots of animals and plants actually are needing to move to, to area, cooler areas and areas where, that maintain the habitat conditions that they need. So, our site, let's see, is there. It is in one, one of these areas that is, it's largely in the high, higher and highest categories for connect, for wildlife connectivity in this study done by the Hudson Highlands Land Trust. So just looking at those few maps, what have we learned? There are many more maps that we could and should be looking at if we were reviewing this, this hypothetical site. But from here, we've learned that there are high elevations on the site, and we would want to certainly consider scenic impacts and possibly some special habitat impacts. There are steep slopes and shallow soils. We'd want to make sure there are careful measures in place to prevent soil erosion and the, and rapid runoff from any cleared land. And consider the impacts of potential blasting and hammering of the bedrock for new development. There are wetlands on the site and a stream. We'd want to make sure that wetlands are delineated onsite, including additional wetlands not shown on the map, if they're there. And that, that any new development here would avoid disturbing the wetlands, the streams and their buffer zones, and avoid any land uses that might pollute those, those features. We learned that there are soils with very slow to moderate infiltration rates. Very slow rates mean we'd want to be very careful about siting and designing septic systems. And, and according to the town code, some of the lots would, the minimum lot size would have to be increased from two acres to 5.4 or to 6.2 acres in some of those areas. For this particular subdivision, that would probably not be a, be a problem, and this is quite a large site. This site is part of a large, high-quality forest and ranked highly for connectivity. And that's something you'd want to consider if you're thinking about where, how to design a subdivision and where to put new driveways and, and houses in ways that, that might maintain that, that important connectivity. And the site has a rare terrestrial animal. We don't yet know the species, and it's a rare bat foraging area. We, we'd want to find out what the species was, what the, and how to accommodate their habitat needs. We'd also want to make sure that any tree cutting and forest clearing on the site would be done in the November to March window, when the, the bats will not be at their summer roosts. None of our bats will remain in this, in this area over the winter. So that's just a very quick rundown. That's one of the ways that I would immediately use the NRI if I were on the Conservation Advisory Committee or the, or the planning board in Kent. There are lots of other ways, and there's lots of other information in the NRI that would be relevant to your work. The, the draft of the NRI that's now on the CAC's website, as I said, it doesn't have the photos. I, I'm sorry about that. But the final draft is actually going to be designed and laid out by a professional. It's going to be a very beautiful document, and it's at that point that the photos will be inserted. This will be published this fall. The, the, the grant deadline for this project is the end of November. So this will be, this will be out, out soon. But we do hope, the Steering Committee wants to get all the comments they can from people like, especially the, the planning board, who we hope will be using the document, the town board, who we hope will also be using it for town policymaking and comprehensive planning, and, and really everyone else. The town hopes to hear from the, the people of Kent, as this is a document for everyone. So there are people here from the Steering Committee. I am here too, to answer any questions. So we hope, we hope you do have some questions.
Thank you, Gretchen. I'll start it off. I love your idea of the maps and putting a piece of property right on the map. And I have a feeling I'm going to go tonight, go home and take a look at some of our projects and see where they land on the map. And I guess maybe your future idea is make it all somehow interactive, where you can just overlay the county tax map
Yes.
On these things and, and work with that. But I think that was fabulous presentation.
Have other towns in the county done, that it is there?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Is there a county interactive map of some kind already?
The tax map, from a tax map
The tax map.
Yeah.
So it's just that.
Yeah.
I wonder, you know, other, you know, Westchester County, I think, has a, has lots of other natural resources in addition to tax parcels, and other, other counties do too. I wonder if that's in the plans for Putnam County, because you are absolutely right. The very best thing to have all this map data right there, so you can just click, you can just go to any parcel that you're interested in and zoom right in and click all these layers on and off.
Right, right. And I don't know, Bruce or John, you might, you might know of other maps that we have of information, wetlands or otherwise, I don't know.
There's some base maps that are used in the town, that are a little bit GIS-based, not ARQ, et cetera. County has some maps that can be used and overlay, but what Gretchen alluded to, you know, I've seen a few towns in Westchester County that have that, where you can go into the town departments, look up your parcel, and basically bring up the layers. We don't have that quite yet.
Right.
Yeah, hope, hope it'll come to you soon. And, and this, all the GIS data that we used or anything that we produced for the NRI will be in your, in the town's possession.
Pretty good. So that's actually the thing I was looking at, something more readily accessible.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Something more readily accessible.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's one thing we don't have.
Yeah, yeah. And it's so much easier than having to flip through a paper copy.
Yeah, it'd be easy to just punch in an address and
Yep, yep.
So, but hopefully, you know, we get the funding for that also, so.
Yep.
So, any other questions from anybody? None? What?
Shaun Boyd. Question about the age of the forest here. Can you stay into the microphone? Yep, you got it. Shaun Boyd. Age of the forest here, so when you see pictures of, you know, Putnam County, the Towne Kent, from, let's say, the late 1800s until 1940, 1950, you saw a lot of dairy farm, not a lot of trees. So how old are the forests that are here now?
Yeah, that's a great question and a great point. There is a, a chapter in the NRI about the land use history here. And you are referring to the, the fact that most of Kent was open land, you know, 100 years ago. It was totally cleared for agriculture in the 1700s and 1800s. You know, a few areas of forest were left, but the landscape was almost entirely open here and all over, all over the Hudson Valley. So a great many of the forests didn't start recovering from agricultural, you know, once agriculture was largely abandoned in the first half of the 20th century, that's when most of the forests started recovering. So many forests are 100 years old or younger. Some are a bit older than that. You probably have a few tiny pockets of, of actually old forests that may never have been cut, but, but most of your forest is quite young on the large scale.
Kathy?
Somebody else have a question? Somebody had a question?
Yeah.
Kathy Khan from Hillendale. First of all, on page 41, Palmer Lake is not on that list of lakes. So it's not under Lake Palmer or Palmer Lake, so. It's actually 28 lakes, not 27 in your document. And then the second question I have is, there's no, you know, not really any mention about industrial uses in the town and how it affects the groundwater and everything else. You allude to the mining, but there's no mention of any industrial use. So you would think that that's kind of an important issue that affects everything in this town, so thought maybe we could have something about that. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else have some questions? I believe people raised their hands up. Here we go.
Sue Carter, Towne Kent. The master plan is 135 pages. This presentation, wonderfully set, is 230 pages. So I think the master plan and this plan needs to come together and make some sense out of what the Towne Kent needs to do to preserve natural resources here without disturbing too much, because we have a lot of, we have a lot of stuff here. We have a lot of history. So thank you very much for presenting this tonight. It's beautiful. Do you need water?
No, no.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a lot of water here.
Anne, I believe you raised your hand?
Yeah, I just, Anne Campbell, Kent. I just wanted to mention that in addition to being on the CAC website, the draft document is actually on the homepage of the town's website, which is a lot easier to find. So if you want to look at it, I encourage you to click the link right on the homepage. And the first page of the document actually has information with email addresses if you want to get comments to us after this meeting. Thank you.
Anybody else want any more questions? None? Well, thank you for your presentation. Very well done. I've already seen the document. Looks very nice. Very well done. Very thorough.
Yeah.
So
Thank you.
Kudos. Whoever did it did a great job.
The, it's the product of a lot of work on the part of the
I could tell. Very good presentation of it too, because I was like, wow. It's very, very visual. So you could, you could tell, like, you could pretty much get in depth. So it was an easy read, so. Unlike the whole master plan, which is not an easy read.
Well, and the final document will actually be very pretty and very nice to look at.
Yeah.
Even more pleasant to read.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So, but a good job, really good job by you guys.
Yeah, great.
Appreciate it. Okay. Any other questions, comments, quandaries? None? Well, I guess we'll move on forward. Gentlemen? I believe we're under the line, right? Yes?
Nothing's changed since we were at the workshop.
What's that?
Nothing's changed since we were at the workshop.
Okay, well then, I guess, that's it.
Yep.
We can pretty much close the meeting. I appreciate everybody showing up. I appreciate everybody coming here for the presentation. It was a very good presentation. I can't make votes, but I'm making motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
That's it. Close meeting. That's it.